Na Obah, after Vice President of the Chief of Staff, Muni muni pahon. Na ono, Nani Professor Nana J. Opoku Ajemane. Enji, Obekai. Obekai say, eh yesa cabinet, you know, eh na eh approval, yeah. Eh ma eh di millions of dollars eh ma pharmaceutical companies. Eh di ma pharmaceutical companies, no. Yeah say, wutu muni anuachre siye iti machre NS Chemist, Tobinco, Dan Adams. Omunyinyanya sikani bi. En ti, sena, uhu NS Chemist. Outless bebre, se omu biye biye. Na green, no money ade, ade no eh wo muha. Na se chre no no. Na ye misa eh, husa eh. Oma mpene John Dramani Mohammed. Senka weh nyasa eh niswadu hu no no. Anfesika, ansho pharmaceutical industry ni muha. Anka coronavirus ba eh. Ah, omae biyara atoto, ne pots, ne bodies hu. Bebe inkok, bebe ma. Bebe baba. Aje abayna approval, no. Anka Ghana, anke ebeye den. Mahu the difference between oma mpene John Dramani Mohammed and eh oma mpene ah otihose say. This is the difference. Vision, foresight, say. Ma me eh ma pharmaceutical companies, no. Men sa oma sene, men ma omo sikha. Omun timi eh espandio omo business. Eh producing bro. Amo fagana four eh dumemu. Debi debi debi. And che, covid ba eh, eh boha eh. Another example of his vision. Ye misa eh, husa eh. University of Ghana Medical Center. Senka weh siya coronavirus ba eh. Ghana Health Minister eh nyaa coronavirus. Anka ehifan in kobeda. Ye misa eh, husa eh. Senka weh si University of Ghana Medical Center. Anka Ghana Education Minister coronavirus ba eh. Oh nyaa coronavirus. Anka ehifan, eh na anka obeko. Eh nyaa omupe, Ghana phobebe. Eh na eh nyaa eh so oh faso. Na ye nde. Ye wojidye say eh. Ye ye eh ma omae no. Na eh yesa, sompa hu hu no. Eh na, yesa di abebim. Ahobra siemu. Say, the difference. Eh pachao. Fibra, oma mpene John Dramani Mohammed. Supported by the Council of Elders, the National Executive Committee. Eh selecive Professor Nana J. Opoku Ajemane. Sabi sabiu, what to say? Eh eh ye eh insult ba akufra efina no abada. En ti compare and contrast. Say, uhu vision, uhu niswadu hu. Debiha uhu green omae no huwa. Insult, a misplace, eh uhu eh ha. That is a leadership NDC eh offer in this election. Still on the jobs and still on the pharmaceutical industry. Se siya eh kasa coronavirus eh koi eh. Yati say, companies eh wa buchre. Produce vaccines. Pfizer for eh bi. Moderna for eh bi. Astrazeneca for eh swa eh bi. Debre eh eh eh. Na asubisa, husa eh. Ghana abayi, ne plan eh ne say eh. Set Ghana for, yeah so. Eh biha eh be nyaa vaccine, maybe Krampu. Ye nde eh bi bi. Wunim say coronavirus na eh ba Ghana no. Niya eh boama University of Ghana. Eh ni nugu chi. Etimi huhu say eh. Na Ghana coronavirus, no. Ye fre no ekuya ana kueku. Na ye fre ome ekuya ana kueku, no. Man sa nekahu, ana say boama eh na ehka eh di nehu no. Wunim sa senta na eh yesa eh dumano. Wunim no seti sa senta ne up. Professor Nana J. Opoku Ajemane. As the Minister for Education eh ne seti ne up. Na anka, NDC abayi eh seti sa sente up, no. Na anka wasenka MPP a troa senta no so. Na anka sabri, omu hu the genetics sequence, no de da da no. Anka sabri, anka omu weke towards eh vaccine. Unfortunately. Eh no, eh na athons hu. Eh nunti no, yes sir. Pharmaceutical industry eh sempa hu. Eh ba eh di eh nima bebre, abe mu. Na eh nyase Ghana happen eh eh say eh pharmaceutical industry, no. Anfa eh numan embra. Ye nyaa eh numan no. Na eh supply in rony besu to the sub region and to Africa. Na ye nyase kabbebe eh so eh de. Aba yemo eh nimi. Iti na uhu nyaa eh dumano hu chafan. Job creation, ICT sector, central region. Ye see see enhanced community information centers bebre eh wahha. Ye see, ye fre no, across the data center no so eh siinkrain. Across the country, ye see several enhanced community information centers. Ye le fiber. Eh na eh sa di plan eh to, husa eh. Ye be eh western corridor fiber. Ye shas, ye see eh de Ghana Infrastructure Investment Fund. Eh di in kitahu. Na ye eh no, eh no eh na manso. Etika odinamanso mu no. Na oh eh, other projects no so eh uhu asa siniso. Central region ha, along the coast. No money deep, 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 deep in. When we say abayi, eh 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 me of such projects eh was central region ha. En ti, mo ba de eh den eh na manya oh faso. Eh nunti, eh na wasa oh toa ba. Eh ma oma mpene John Dramani Mohammed. Eh dwa da eh be. Na osa ba, why eh Minister for Communications da? Eh otisecta na say. Ono na Obah, amaye training. Ye fre no one million coders. Ah, computer programmers. Omuha ombe timi eh design website, no money ade ade. Omuha ombe timi eh share algorithm. Eh de eh eh solutions. Management of small, small eh business, eh de de nini na no. Search, you know. Eh na eh de eh ba be ma Ghana eh membu. Ghana youth, na ometimende eh dumah eh. Se bebe ya eh konkoe eh say. Se eh dubere bi, na opese obiye bi bi sa ama wa. Na eh biha eh wasa oh she abontin. Asana weh nyaa obi, amanababe eh be, ababe eh. Uhu eh eh wo eh fiwa. Fishing. Eh bebe eh na ato fishing. Premise. Afarifo eh koi eh, ana say omu ba eh. The rest assured, an NDC government. Inspired by the vision of Professor John Evans Atameus. Ah, London Beach Committees, no money ade ade eh ba eh. Eh sa abebim, seni bebe ya. Mupe nyama premise, no. Brea eh wasi mu nanu. Muakosan kosama control. Na nipahbebe eh tima eh den eh nyaa eh dumah eh eh. Ye fiwa. Na eh eh ba be eh seni eh fre no National Apprenticeship Program. National Apprenticeship Program. Yeah say, eh biha. Eh nyane pey nana eh be timi eh koo. Sa oh kua koo chocho. Na otibu kechi, na oh siyah de. Eh nyane pey nana eh be tima eh sa. Na asu nipahy nara, obiyara hu oh faso. Obiyara hu oh faso. Eh bejino biyara hu oh faso. Obiyara hu oh faso fi say. Unsei, say eh cha eh biha. Wutimi Krampu nde den eh bo eh po. Eti opesa uhu, seni pe biyara hu oh faso. Eh wasa at least, ok. My site example beachro. Ne call Ministry be first. Na, eh do eh numerebe five ansana omode letters aba. Thursday, second day na me call eh, na me say ah. Eh no, me say oh. Eh cha eh say letters, nini la aba. Na eh eh de aba, eh na me say oh. Na say ohka hospital. Na eh di obiyara card eh wait eh, the last person comes. Asana eh de card na koma eh doctor, say eh new. En ti no, ye nyane eh say anopa. By nine, first set of letters, embra. By twelve, second set, embra. By four PM, third set, embra. By five PM, last set, embra. Obiyara oh faso, no eh nubino no. Ministry eh say no, Minister ohho. Deputy Minister ohho. Chief Director ohho. Na aso, action eh na eh oh work records eh be teki. With this issue, say eh wasa odilete eh bra hu Minister, ma oh ye hu eh dumano. One teki sa action na eh affected the productivity of the entire Ministry. Eh nunti no, ye nde. Yeah say, eh nyaschool for pet. Eh na, sa human resource gap analysis, na eh eh no. Ombe be nyaa eh dumah. Obu oh hansoa, na insanoh dumah eh no eh na eh talent. Eh nunti no, ye the National Apprenticeship Program eh ba. Obu ohwa, ne dan na koma somese eh inka obeyeh dressa. Obu ohwa, ne dan na koma somese eh inka obeyeh capinta. Obu ohwa, ne dan na koma sofa eh se inka obeyeh painter. Obu ohha de de eh se inka obeyeh mason. Obu ohha de de eh se inka obeyeh lay floor tiles. No so eh ne, Ghana force oria. Na eh fre no kofo eh fi togo. Na oma wa be lay floor tiles. But eh ohga na form peni fawa ha. Ah, omu min floor tiles lay pa. Eh na, NDC abayi so eh share ceramics and tar factory eh say. Eh was western region eh siemu eh ya. Eti NDC abayi eh share tar factory eh say. Ye re eh. Na say Ghana force ohwa ha, ombe timi eh lay tiles ha. Date na yen traini, ye maywa eh me eh me muha eh. Ba de ya no muhian eh say eh. Sikaka cra, ah, odibe faka Krampu. Akaku siya eh dumano, ye ana eh edin. Sikaka cra, ah, odibe terbe eh ne di. Oh siya eh dumano, ye ana eh edin. NDC abayi eh was abada eh. Eh nunti, eh na oma mpene John Dramani Mohammed. Eh me Professor Nana J. Opoku Ajemane eh say eh. Sa sikana aparani eh ya. Sa odibe terbe eh ne. Sa odibe faka. Akaku siya eh tibo capentry. Tar laying, no money ade ade no. NDC abayi afah. Eh nyane ma me ehka. Eh nyane papa ehka. NDC abayi afah. Eh ba be traini, ife say eh nimiti say eh. Se sa nipahweh, eh traini omu. Omu bebe den eh be ba oh faso. Eh ma omae no. En ti eh numan de. Ye kasi eh de one million jobs eh ba. Na eh ke hu, several sectors. Tourism, central region eh. Ye wo, eh no so eh hu. Ah, eh ba be peja tourism. No so, iti several sectors. Medema no eh si no. Ye nishet infrastructure. Mijidi say eh, who was central region ha? Na say okes deli, oh koo inkrain, kua dea. Ana uhu biha oh koo inkrain, na Obah. Obekro say oh, say say de. Me do kasa Krampu, me hupe si me do kasa. Eh no one eh si me kum. Na mesro, abayi be na eh ma oh faka swase say eh. Eh koo yo no. Eh NDC abayi? Eh you too direct. Sa abayi no, eh ne NDC abayi. Oma mpene John Dramani Mohammed. Eh na na eh eh president. Wasan Nana J. Opoku Ajemane. Otis cabinet eh mu. Eh na sa project eh ne eh ven eh koso. Na wunpe weh, opede be. Niya eh ka, in the infrastructure sector eh say eh. Ye be ten billion US dollars eh ba be share infrastructure. Ife say eh, eh eh passwa interchange eh ye. Abayi ba eh, anka odinatwasa. Na dualize eh, fa eh koini bi eh toh incha ha. Na bebe atu incha ha. Etika eh say eh no, eh biha omu nam mi faso. Na kasi na eh koo eh fasta no. Eh nam bekumso. Ombe kontem, ne boha na. Nsa fe de, eti seni eh eti eh. Seni eh ombe toh no no. Sa eh be eh den eh eti eh. Eh nunti eh ye say, December seven. To Abah, eh ma oma mpene John Dramani Mohammed. Eh dwa de eh ya, na umbra. Anfa ten billion US dollars, no. Big push. Eh me biha eh koini mu. Na undualize eh, seni bebe ya. Ufi inkrain, na oh bas central region na. Oh koon hu. Ufi inkrain, oh kua western swa, ombe konhu. Eh no ne big push na eh eh ka no. Me nam kwa so ba, man ke sim. Eh na me hu bebo. Eh na me say yes, that's right eh. Eh say, Obah eh eh, modern market eh was man ke sim. Eh na Professor Nana J. Opoku Ajemane. Eh na oma mpene John Dramani Mohammed. Omu foni fe fe eh bossi. Eh say, odibe big push, no, ten billion dollars, no. Odibe eh ba be eh modern market eh was man ke sim. Na mesro, me me no. Me papa no, me ma me no. Ah mu ti eh me eh was de muha. TV so eh ne bebe ya. Oma mpene John Dramani Mohammed. Onua oh si KJ T market. Onua oh si whole market. Onua oh si Abraham market. Central region eh ha. Onua oh si Kotkraba market, you know. Sa okasi Obah eh si ultra modern market eh was man ke sima. Wunji nini nde na. En ti, oma mpene John Dramani Mohammed. Eh ne the current president. Wa na obegine di, sa okase obesi man ke sim marketa. Too sure, too direct. En ti, anpa, such markets, no. Bebre eh nyaa man ke sim pe, several places be ne bi. La ba be Krampu so oh wo market de da. Na aso famhoya atecheno. Yeah say, ye ma no no, ye nyama eh ye no. Mo kon marketa. Eh wasi eh mam, distant environment. En ti pavement blocks, ye debe farm markets nini nara. Eh ne lorry stations nini nara. Seni bebe ya eh so ta, atecheh eh hamu. En ti, ye ka infrastructure na. Akain hu, hospitals hu, suku hu. Eh na ma bebre eh na eh hu. En ti, medema no eh si. Nisha eh say eh, ehka sa Abah free primary healthcare. Free primary healthcare, no. Eh ba, eh ma, uhu eh Ghana eh ninkua dea. Wunihase eh, oh health insurance. Ana wunhi health insurance. NDC abayi, abayi oh free. Eh nunti, to Abah eh dwa da eh be. Eh ma John Dramani Mohammed. Na to Abah eh ma NDC parliamentary candidate. So, seni bebe ya eh be say eh si kanu eh koo parliamentary. Omu bebe de, ombe approval. Ye nyaa kueku rekis Hagan, outi eh say eh. Wunim finance eh pa pa pa. Ye nyango parliament. Omu ni na no, ye jome ni na o parliament. Ye ka uhu bi, eh ne say eh, free primary healthcare. Eh di nima bebre eh ba. Free primary healthcare eh ba eh de eh national health insurance eh ye. Na ye shaweni na no, health workers. Ah eh ba be boha eh me eh deliver free primary healthcare, no. Omu si be hu. Yeah say, vehicle waiver. Uhu eh health worker, wa kraka. Taxes eh de ade na, customs for eh ya eh nti eh no. Ye be, wa eh be eh fi swama. Seni bebe ya obena ka, na odia eh eh dumah. Eh ba be boha, eh ma ye si si, eh dying no so. Eh was hospitals. Seni bebe ya eh eh say eh. Ombe tina eh chi 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 chi, no eh tu koi eh de biha eh abe dumah. Na ye yesama no. Na, oh pension no eh eh be ohho. En ti no, oh sinet contributions. Ombe timi eh de ajimodge. Na udi si, wangasa ohde, ohde. Na NDC abayi, sa she bos say eh. Five point two million social housing units de. Ye be dri biyago, the two hundred and sixty districts, na eh wo eh was yemo yemu eh say eh. Seni bebe ya odia be nyaa, ne chafan. Eh eh, social housing. Ife say eh, ne boha eh be eh fo. Na eh was strategy no swa eh de ma no boha no eh de eh, eh fo. Na workers eh timi eh de eh eh ne bi. Ye eh free primary healthcare eh fiwa no. Eh na eh kasa no so eh fire eh numan hu. Na eh numan no, eh na ye chre say eh. Every year, two hundred and fifty thousand jobs. Four years, one million jobs. Eh numan no, omuha akacha for eh me eh rabah for de hu. Omu soa, omu eh chocho. Ombe siya eh dumah, omuwa eh san no, numan skills. Omu si de hu. One million, obiyara bebe eh be nyaa ne de eh eh hu. Eh bi, eh me ICT jobs eh me kanhwa se me. Eh be ni National Apprenticeship Program. Eh be ni health sector, over seventy thousand vacancies. Education, over ninety thousand vacancies. Police, military, no money ade ade bebre eh. Eh nunti, ye me say eh, Abah eh kua kuti, eh nyantoka. Eh nyantoka. NDC, ye believe in all die be die. Share, eh presidential candidate. Share eh ba me, Professor Nana J. Opoku Ajemane. Assume graceful peace eh nunti eh say. Ye refya eh voters eh be ka, dan eh ni biyara eh NDC eh be. Na ye ma na eh koi eh no. Ye sakremu. Na ye mfa abayi papa, embra. Na sa Abayi no. Eh na boha, na ye me eh. Anfa min tamapa infrah, medama si.
Mohammed Administration eh de corruption eh chi. Who will be defend this time around?
I should say, we stand dedicated. Because if you look how we leave office, you know. No direct political appointee of mine. Political appointee like Minister or anybody, they convict them for corruption. After all the things they say, all the lies they talk and things. Eh be weh they say eh. No conviction, like we steal money or something. By my own, several of us there inside.
I'm Nana J. Growing up as a little girl, I didn't dream of standing in this position. Not that I knew that it even existed. However, making history is gratifying. But what really matters is not to be the first through the door. What matters is to hold that door open for those behind us. What matters is to create other avenues for self-actualization for many more. That is the work of the next four years. Together, all of us, we can strategize to solve longstanding problems of needless and unproductive discrimination and thrive as valued citizens. Come, let us link our efforts and thoughts to rebuild our institutions. Let's build a truly independent, inclusive nation that is not afraid to respect the views of others. The time is now.
Heyo, the time is now, anpa. Eh ma me naite eh ne kanu. Honorable Dr. Mane Boama Wakasa. Ema me eh dunu eh beko eh next speaker. Feiri, why eh regional minister eh Ashanti Regenda. Wasan eh eh regional minister eh Bono Region. Mprempre eh eh MPP is in a full south constituency. Honorable Eric Opoku, Fasemoshia, no na oni eh imeti in komoa. Eh mu eh Hamarai. Fanyen Apofu Husem, Koko Husem, Mayne Husem, no do do nara.
Your Excellency, Professor J. Nana Opoku Ajemane. Honorable Samuel Ofosu Ampofu, Chairman Baakope. Eh busi anfoa eh eh shiha. Eh ne, metopik no eh, makou makou meh sa. Na eh de, ngetwa miye no so akahun. Na, my chance eh free bebe ya. Ye nyaa oma no boama, oh ye eh no no. Eh busi anfoa, NDC, ye haukes eh pa eh say eh. Ye entampe kasa. Ti eh ma koin, eh ma MPP for chocho biha. Na bebe no kree eh was mehimu. Kwame kromapensu no. Na Ghana nibe biha oh Ghana eh biha no ohka hospital free, no nti eska. No biha ohka hospital free. Eh eh de na Ghana, ye koo tui eska oh hospital. Wa ohhe biha so ohfona, obenyagogo afah. Na ye nini na ye gogo, Hospital Fees Act nineteen seventy one. Na ye ready session one. In nineteen seventy one. Na 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 ku faru papa na eh Ghana mapenyini. Eh no ade ba say eh, Ghana ba inti min show biha hospital free da. En ti wa abeko hospital eh biha tui esika. Eh no ade share nineteen seventy seventy one budget eh mu. Eh no wasan eh de eh embra. Eh no ye fre no, Hospital Fees Act nineteen seventy one. Session one eh say eh, ohka hospital eh. Charge eh bebe eh biha oh so tui eh. Just eh consultation no kua eh no wun tui eh ka. Eh na eh de cash and carry eh ba Ghana ha. Eh na eh de cash and carry eh ba ha. Eh na NDC, Yerwey Rollins eh say eh, cash and carry no mu eh. Ti eh ba kua kofa, health insurance eh de Aba Ghana. Two thousand, ye nyaa no me be before eh press conference. Omze eh health insurance eh. Yerwey Mama eh Yerwey Rollins eh beba Ghana no. Eh be bo Ghana kua kua. Eti omu mpe so. Omu win election two thousand no. Eh no ombe health insurance eh beba Ghana ha. Ye fre no, district mutual base mutual health insurance eh eh district base. Mutual health insurance scheme eh eh district base. Eh di sa ohka Kipkosan municipality eh. Na register health insurance eh. Ohka another district eh, sa ka eh de ne eh ye dumah. Eh dumah eh fona eh no eh office no. Omu jiji premium na eh no ombe tui eh omu hoka. Eh na NDC eh sa ba power two thousand and eight. Two thousand and twelve. Eh NDC eh eh emra fo fro. Eh ye de health insurance eh eh ba koo pay for the whole country eh ba Ghana ha. Eh no ne the current health insurance scheme eh, Ghanaians eh enjoy eh. Ye eh health insurance no. Eh ne establishing National Health Insurance Authority. SEC officer eh say eh fa eh nipahbebe eh dumah. Eh ye fa oh mu nina eh dumah ba center. Eh ye tui eh oh nina eh ka. Eh ye say card no, ye de ma oh bolga. Na ade ba Kipkosra eh eh Ghana, wutimi eh ko hospital eh ma ni eh eh. Eh di sa ne, the same NDC. Ye kajro sa oh eh yare. Na eh boha ohka hospital eh free eh. Na eh was track record eh be timi eh eh, eh ma eh eh eh. Eh busi anfoa. Ye nyaa no ma kopo so. Eh nyina eh eh ne Ghana no. Ghana ha, uni pe biha oh Ghana eh biha na kachi fone bukuntase. Afibia eh one eh aguna crown eh fish one eh bi crown eh. Uni pa ba koo biha eh twenty six kilos. En ti Ghana eh nini na eh population eh na. Afibia eh no fish eh kuha eh yare no. Eh bro one million tons. Na aso so eh de eh nyaa, ye na koso crown eh. Four hundred thousand tons, four hundred and fifty thousand tons. En ti eh yo huge gap. Aguna eh yare no eh doso sinet de eh nyano oh Ghana ha. En ti pre biha eh no, ye pe say eh 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 bi bi ma. Ye nyaa no ma kopo so no ni omu eh yu yu ne no. Etimi nyammo, fi say market eh no ohho already. En ti eh afibia eh Ghana eh di esika. Eh koo ye si di kosi sa dollars. Na eh de akua abuchre, akoka eh aguna eh ba. Ni eh be eh. Nese esika eh be timi eh de ketti jobs eh wa ha no. Ye de ketti jobs eh was amanone. Wenti, eh na ma eh Yerwey Rollins eh eh say eh. Seni bebe ya eh muha oh kopo so. Ombe tia eh eh no. Ye nyabe bi ma muha no namu hun har mu. Na ehka amo banon kofa mu. Na mu tia eh ye dumah ma agene eh ba eh mo biye eh nyabi eh. Eh na ma eh Yerwey Rollins eh premise fu eh no, ne subsidy eh de ba Ghana ha. Sa Ghana eh nibe biha eh oh kopo so no. Premise eh na eh eh ye eh de eh buhafidi eh mu eh de akoka so no. Abayi be tui esika eh kes eh. Na wosu eh tui eh kakree eh bi, na weti eh nyabi. Eh no ne ma premise eh no eh eh de ba eh. En ti premise fu eh premise fu eh no, eh NDC eh ba. Yerwey Rollins eh no nyame nam no so eh de premise subsidy. Sa Abayi be tui eh keni bi, eh ma eh eh fo eh ma one eh kopo so no, wade ba ohmehimu. Eh no eh chi no, eh ji shebe eh wa eh eh sa eh de ba eh eh say eh. Obi pe say eh oh koto, adbot moto eh de koi eh dumah. Awa ohde eh, ombe tia eh eh, na asu wunisika. Aba eh be eh ne de eh. Eh ne no so eh NDC kro eh eh kofa eh eh bio. Se se san eh ti eh de eh.